Good evening, one and all. It's now 6 o'clock and we are gathered here at the Bennington Fire Facility. I'm Tom Jacobs and have the pleasure of chairing the Bennington Select Board. This is the Monday, September 10th already, meeting of the Select Board. Our first meeting of the month of September. I would like to have my colleagues introduce themselves. We'll start with Stu Hurd, our Town Manager, Si, Jean.
Good evening, I'm Jean Conner.
Good evening, Carson Thurber.
My name is Jim Carroll.
Good evening, I'm Donald Campbell.
Hi, I'm Jeanie Jenkins.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
And Nancy Lott, Secretary of State.
Great, thank you Bill. Thanks, one and all, Stu and Nancy. As is our practice, we offer the Pledge of Allegiance. Jim, would you lead us?
I'd be happy to.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Before we get into the business at hand, I would just like to offer a couple of comments on some recent developments which appear to be, at least to this speaker, bothersome. Kaia Morris has indicated that she's not going to follow and seek reelection. One, I think we owe Kaia a debt of gratitude for her service to the community. Notwithstanding that, the circumstances surrounding her decision, at least in part, in a significant part, were based upon the volatile, inappropriate, demeaning, racist comments directed toward her and her family. That's not something that we as a community can and will ever accept. I want to offer the community, Kaia first, our strong statement that if there are individuals or if you are exposed to this type of situation, you have a right and a responsibility to yourself and your community to report it. And I offer our Police Department as the place where that should be affected. Because we are a community that, we go back many hundreds of years, and we want a community that is open to every persuasion. We want a community that's open regardless of country of national origin or any other I'd like to say more, but I think the facts speak for themselves. This is not something that we will tolerate going forward. We are an open community. My comments, if anyone would like to give a brief addition to it, feel free to.
May I?
Please.
First of all, I was born and raised in this town.
Speak up to the mic.
And in all the years that I grew up here, I never heard this sort of thing. Not only that, in all the years that I had my card, and I would say the vast majority of people that I served were working-class guys, gun owners, and I never heard that sort of thing. It doesn't mean that it doesn't exist. But what I do want to say is this is not who we are. It never has been during all of my life. And we owe it to ourselves. If you see it, call it out, stare it down, and absolutely abhor it. Kaia, and here's the thing that gives me some reassurance. Kaia has stood for office three times, and I was proud to lose to her in our primary election by 20 votes. And after that, she won by significant majorities. So that tells me something about the people of Bennington. We're not racist.
Thank you.
We gave her a chance, and we believed in her, and we elected her twice and then a third time in her primary. And that's who we are.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Any other?
If I may, I just would like to add that, you know, as I understand it, this is not a new phenomenon for Kaia. She's put up with a lot during the time that she's been representing us, and she's done amazing work for our community, and she's also done some really important work for the state in bringing a lot of really important issues about race and underserved populations to the forefront. So we owe her a great debt of gratitude for her hard work, as you've said, and for really putting up with a lot while she was doing that. It's difficult enough to be a representative, as I understand it, but it's very difficult when you have to have that kind of criticism coming at you. So I would strongly echo both of your sentiments and just make sure that we are, let Kaia know that we are very, very thankful for her service and that we support her all the way.
Thanks, Donald. Okay, we'll move into the business. We have a consent agenda. It contains the minutes of the August 27th, 2018, meeting as well as the warrants which were circulated as part of the meeting packet. I've reviewed them and I hope others have as well. Having that in mind, I'll entertain a motion for acceptance of our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or additions relative to, I always look to my right.
We always look to Jeanie.
I've been good lately.
No, you've been great.
No, we like you.
I believe, I didn't watch the meeting, I never do actually, but I think where I mentioned during the conversation on page one, on, let's see, line 26 through 28, I believe my question was about the property, the ownership of the property, not the, because a purchase and lease agreement is an agreement, but that doesn't mean it was, the transaction had occurred. I think that's what I said?
Right, for the building.
The building.
Rather than for the tenant.
Right, right. So I was asking for clarification that the building had closed, and indeed it hadn't at that time, but I was reassured that the money
Is still in our control.
Was in escrow, and yeah, yeah. But I don't know if that language is important. I always pay closer attention to the stuff that I'm attributed as saying, so.
All conditions have been satisfied. The closing will take place on September 7th. Whether or not that's occurred, we don't know. I don't know. Again, we're talking about the minutes. I don't think we need to, I think the minutes capture the essence of where the funds are, and your concern as well as others, whether or not the funds were actually delivered to the party that would apply for them. And I think we're comfortable that they have not. When all conditions have been met, that's when they'll be released from that special account that's been created. But I knew and understood that the closing had not occurred, but the contract had been signed back in that meeting.
So you're saying they can, they should stand as they are?
I think it's okay.
Okay.
Other comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I don't see that's the case. Everybody voted affirmative. The consent agenda hasn't been adopted. Now, as we have, as a regular basis, we always start our meetings after the consent agenda with a comment period. We have a sign-up sheet which contains a number of individuals. I would invite those individuals in the order that they've signed up to come speak, identify themselves at the microphone, and we'll have a brief conversation because we really limit this to about three minutes apiece. This is not for the extended dialogue because it's not, it relates to matters that are not on the agenda. And the first individual is William Stewart, relative to Morgan Springs. Thanks, Bill.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, folks of Bennington. I guess we all know who I am.
Go ahead and identify yourself.
My name is William Stewart. I am resident of 127 Bradford Street.
Thanks, Bill.
And I'm here back again 30 days later to see if we have had any movement or any ideas of what we're going to do next about the Morgan Spring. Because at the last meeting, I believe I was only 1% as accused of being 1% argument. And I've gone around and gotten petitions and people from everybody that faces the Morgan Spring, and I haven't really gotten around to the rest of the people. But I'm currently working around the neighborhood, and most of the signatures that I have right here have the same exact idea that I have. This should not be in a residential area. Why did it get put here in the first place? We don't really know. Nobody knows because it was made by one person, and the Select Board never had a vote on it. It was never put up for an impact study. It was never anything for the water and that we know of at this point through the contract. So my question is, have we moved on anything that is so far?
I can suggest to you that there is activity, we're dealing with the issue. Part of this really has to remain somewhat confidential because of the sensitive nature of the process. But I can assure you that we are moving on it. That absence of you hearing is not as a result of no consideration being given to the concerns of yourself or your neighbors. So I can tell you, you may not appreciate the response, but there will be one in hopefully in short order. But we all heard you, and your concerns are meaningful, but let's see what we can do to deal with a water source that is a benefit to the community, so that is a benefit to the community without overly impacting upon the community or the area where you're living.
Well, there was quite a few questions from these people that I'm getting signatures from that live within the immediate area of the entrance of it. And the biggest problem is that it was brought up to me over the weekend was, why are we buying our water back when we sell at the Crystal Rock and then the residents of our town have to go and buy it back? There were huge problems. Their biggest question to me was, is why can't we have access to that water? When we sell it, why do we have to go to a store and buy it back when it's, we already paid for it once by our taxes and the upkeep of it and so forth and so on? So this is just one of the big questions that are coming up. And I have a few, I have just maybe nine, 10 signatures of the people that live around it, but there's going to be more.
Why don't you circulate that, bring it in and drop it off at the Town Manager's office? And why don't you keep that, Bill, until you
I have lots more.
Okay, but continue to add to it if you would like. I can tell you though, you know
Well, the question, the question is, I've been at this for four years now. The question is, is now that this is coming to a head, we should have done something in the process before this. And everybody understands the same fact that I understand, is that I've been at this for four years, and now we are doing something about it. The bottom line of this is, everybody believes the same way I do. This contract legally and lawfully should not be renewed at the site of Morgan Spring, Bradford Street. And we all understand the fact that we need to move this if it's going to change anything whatsoever. And the simple fact today that, once I sent the video of today, they're back to pounding the aquifer like a drum. 14 trucks came into that aquifer today.
You understand, for better or for worse, the contract calls for a significant
But we've already been through this, as per contract, that one person made. Not the Select Board, not the town, not anybody else, but one person made this contract. I know, Mr. Jacobs, you find that funny, but it's in the contract, one person.
Mr. Jacobs doesn't find it funny. All I know, this has a Town of Bennington's signature through its Town Manager, and it's not Stuart Hurd's contract, it's the Town of Bennington's contract. So as I said, we're working on trying to have some resolution that is benefit to the community as well as the neighborhood. That's, if anything, I've worked, being on the Select Board, as things don't happen as fast as we all would like, it's a process. Sometimes the process causes angst and money and financial issues, so.
Well, this issue shouldn't drop back on the Town of Bennington. If Crystal Rock wants this water, we should be absolutely maintaining the stance that if you don't do something about the change of this, at the end of four years, this contract is over. This drops back to Randolph, Vermont. The reason why this aquifer was sent down here 16 years ago is because the same problem existed with Randolph, Vermont. They pounded that aquifer to the point where the residents of that town would not put up with it anymore, and they abolished their contract. So therein, they had to come to the Town of Bennington and talk with Stuart Hurd because they had no other source of water, because they were thrown out of Randolph, Vermont. So understand the one simple fact. Crystal Rock wants to maintain the name Vermont Pure, and if they lose this contract on Bradford Street, no matter what as per contract is made, the contract was made for too much water in a day, and putting 14 trucks in there at 100,000 gallons a day is simply out of control. And I don't care if, Jeanie Jenkins said it so eloquently a month ago, she wouldn't put up with it in front of her house. Now, as I get more signatures, none of us want to put up in front of his house, and I really don't want to feel like I'm the 1%. There is many more people that don't want to speak up like I want to speak up, because it's got to be impacting them as bad as it packs me. I get people just stopping on the side of the road that have had enough of the tractor-trailer traffic because they got to sit behind it and wait three, four, five minutes trying to take their kid to school. I've got people want to sign the petition just for that simple fact. The traffic backup on the street is out of control.
I understand.
And one truck every 25 minutes is insane.
Okay, I understand and appreciate your comments. We can only take them from here, and we'll try to keep you in the information loop to the extent that we can without jeopardizing the Town of Bennington's position or the neighborhoods.
Well, I agree that, listen, I am 150% for the town making more money off this water. But the fact that we're only making a little bit amount on a huge impact in a residential area is the main topic, really, it really is.
There's no disagreement in some part of your statement. Thanks, Bill.
So I should be expected here something soon, or some progress of this sooner, because this is going on four years now, gang?
Yeah, I appreciate, I've been the benefit, I have the benefit of sitting on this board for almost six years, and some things take a lot longer than one would like, but that's just the nature of dealing with it.
Well, I hope that by the time I come back in two weeks, I will have much more signatures on the petition for this, and the simple fact that
It's helpful.
We need, if it doesn't work this way, if it doesn't have a timely fashion, that it's time that maybe we should put this into a legal aspect, a political aspect, or maybe more than that, put it up for a vote with the signatures soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Peter Odenera, Peter. Good evening, Peter.
Yes, good evening. It's all right, I'd like to bring my partner up.
Sure, pull up a chair.
Peter Odierna, resident of Bennington, employed by KNE Plastics.
And I'm James Solerno, resident of Shaftesbury, but my business, Hale Mountain Research, is here in Bennington.
And we wanted to come before the board and the community tonight to alert everybody about a new workforce training initiative that the manufacturers in the community are partnering on.
Yeah, so this is probably going back six, seven months now. Eric Brodersen, Peter, and I all sat down, put our heads together and identified a common need that Hale Mountain Research, KNE Plastics, Command, MAC, and, you know, there's a couple, three, four other names on the list, depending on how far you cast the net. We all have a similar problem. There's a, let's call it a specific workforce development gap that we identified. That was for trained CNC machine operators. So that's, you know, the new computer-controlled version of your traditional milling and lathe type equipment that you would see in a machine shop. So all of us, you know, local manufacturers, we came together and we said, well, hey, let's try and do something about this. Let's leverage some of the assets that the town and the greater community have and see if we could put together a program. And, you know, it's for the benefit of the community, it's for the benefit of local economic development, and we're just wrapping up the first series of the class tomorrow is the final one. Our first class was all incumbent workers, you know, we wanted to sort of test the thing out and make sure everything worked right. And we're happy to say that the October 2nd
Yep.
The October 2nd class is going to be open to the public. So we're hoping that if anybody has any friends, family, what have you, that, you know, they're coming towards the end of school and they don't know what to do, or they feel stuck in their job, maybe want to try a change, you know, maybe they're tired of a job and they want a career that they can grow in over the years. This will open some pretty significant doors for them in an industry that's growing rapidly.
Yep. So the training consists of 30 hours of classroom study over the span of five weeks. So we tried to make this a very fast-track program, and each student from the general public who successfully completes the training will be guaranteed an interview with one of the participating companies. The cost to run the training at the CDC is $1,500. We have a maximum capacity of 12 students, so if you do the math, it's $125 per student, but there is tuition assistance available through the Bennington Department of Labor Office. So we're here to ask for your help. We're not here to inform you, we're asking you to help us make this an actionable training program, because we currently have jobs available now that fit this category. But if you look at our current demographic of the workforce of KNE Plastics, Command, and what have you, it will show you that we've got an aging workforce. And at least in KNE Plastics' perspective, we have 30 employees, we're probably looking at four or five who are going to retire in the coming years. So we've got a plan on replacing those folks as well as identifying new growth opportunities for the company and the staffing requirements associated with that.
Comments from the board? Jean.
Can you talk about the kind of skills that people need and what kind of pay, if you're willing to share that, would they expect, or could they expect?
So the class that's starting on October 2nd is the Operator Level 1, so this would be an entry-level CNC training. In a perfect world, you'd have, you know, a somewhat decent mathematical background, you'd have some idea how to put stuff together, you'd be able to, you know, look at a diagram and make sense of it. This will all be reinforced during the training, but it would be good if, you know, you did have that basic skill set to start at.
Do you have to have a college degree?
No.
Absolutely not.
Yeah, so basically, they're going to go over the basics. Here's how you load, here's how you load things into a vice, here's how you tell the machine to go, here's safety, here's how to communicate properly between shifts, how to, you know, fill out the associated paperwork that goes with the parts through, you know, the travel, it's a job traveler, travels with the parts through the facility. It's entry-level skills, but it's very specific skills, and it's something that, you know, it's been tough for a few local companies to find, so, you know, we all decided to put our heads together and take the initiative, and the CDC's been very helpful. And yeah, we're happy that we're going through round two on this.
That's fantastic. It's really, really great.
Hey.
Really great.
Hey.
What?
How much?
Oh, what was the, are you allowed to say what amount of money?
It's going to vary from company to company, but at KNE Plastics, if you go through the training, Operator Level 1, you probably start in, you know, mid to low teens, somewhere in that, you know, $13, $14, $15 an hour.
Benefits?
Yes. And there are different levels of training that will be conducted at the CNC, and over time, you know, we'll have training for incumbents, training for the general public. But if we get a student who goes through Operator Level 1, gets an entry-level position with one of the participating companies, shows a willingness to learn, goes through a number of more advanced training opportunities, the net result is they become a more valuable employee.
Sure.
Now, I can say on average, and this is average and it's probably skewed by Chittman County a little bit, but the average manufacturing wage in Vermont is $54,000. So there's a pathway where you can have a good middle-class job.
Well, I look forward to having you come back and
Yeah.
Tell us how successful you are.
But again, we need, we need help getting the word out
Okay.
You know, supporting the training
Okay.
Because if it doesn't work, it's just going to be an exercise in futility.
No.
It'll work. It's going to work.
It sounds like it's working right now. At each level, is there a certification process, or will they be issued a certificate from?
We're evaluating that. Wendy Morse with Department of Labor is helping out and trying to find if there are national certifications that we can sort of tailor the program to as we go forward. And then, you know, the students that go through the program, they'll, you know, they'll have a certification, a nationally-recognized certification. Something probably similar to what we did, was it last year, with the MSSC Certified Production Training Technician Program. We're going to try to do that, but in the short term, it fills needs that companies in the area are having, you know, imminently.
It's nice to see signs, you know, workers want to, I've seen around town, some of these larger companies, looking for valued employees, and I think valued employees are those that make an investment in the company because the company's willing, a company among these many that you're suggesting, have an interest, and their lifeline is their employees that have skills. And with the CDC and the other programs that are available, including through the Vermont Department of Employment Security, this is what we're all about. And thanks for taking the leadership in whatever this board individually or as a board can offer. We'll be happy to do that. You know, if it's a letter to someone or a resolution to suggest how important it is, let us know.
And I guess our final comment is, you know, one of the reasons that we're also doing this is, you know, there's a common narrative out there that there's no good jobs in Bennington, and from an employer's perspective, we feel very strongly that the opposite is true. So that's why we wanted to go out there, particularly in front of the board and the community tonight, to say, hey, now here's an opportunity, you know, to work with, you know, cutting-edge, advanced manufacturing processes.
That's great, guys. Really thanks very much for taking the time and the interest.
Go to the CDC's website, go visit the CDC, get a course catalog, get enrolled in the class.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Bruce Lee Clark, I see it says Soliciting Ordinance. We have that on the agenda tonight. Would you want to stick around when we have that discussion in about?
I can.
We can move it.
Yeah. No, I just, it's coming quickly. It's at the end of this period. So that is our practice. Keith Leary, Keith?
Hi, my name is Keith, and I'm a resident of Mount Benton. I live on 212 Silver Street. I complained, I talked to the Benton Police, and I was so upset about two months ago, I seen people flying down Tasty Free, and they're doing like 76 miles an hour, and the speed limit 30, and he almost hit a little girl, or a guy, and the guy got mad, and said, "We reported." And I got so mad, and one of these, someone's going to hurt.
Where was this, Silver Street at the bottom where it intersects with Union Street?
Yeah, no, by Tasty Free, where I work. I work at Tasty Free. It happened over the summer.
Tasty Free?
Over by Smoke Danning.
Okay.
And I reported to the police and Vermont Street Police.
Yes.
And I was so upset about it. And this car stopped. I seen high school flying down there doing 765, and probably they do it nighttime and during the day, and somebody's going to hurt.
Stu, could you just bring it to the attention of the chief to deal with? I think the state police have to deal with that as well, because it is part of the state highway.
State highway. Yeah, I think the local police can better, I think, respond to it.
Yeah.
And I tend to agree. People coming off of the highway, you're going from a two-lane divided highway down to a single lane, and it happens right at Tasty Free.
Yeah, and it's like a race to the
Yeah, and they think they own the road, and I'm so upset.
I can understand, but we appreciate you bringing that to our attention because maybe we can be more active in getting the police and also the word out that we're not going to be
And the police can't be anywhere every day, you know, they can't be anywhere, it just bothers me a lot. And I work there. And one of these says that one's going to get hurt or get in an accident. It's got to stop.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you want to, yep, the comment she got back in before, I think, go ahead. Yeah, that's okay.
Another meeting before. My name is Lorna Charaton, and I'm a resident of Bennington. I'm here I'm here to ask the Select Board to take action on a situation that is making an intersection dangerous. It's the intersection of Prospect and Silver. And the problem arises because there's actually two different cars which park near the intersection of Silver and Prospect. They're parked legally, but only about 15 feet from the intersection. And my husband and I have both witnessed close calls, near accidents, that have happened. And I've almost been hit twice myself because in order to get around the cars that are parked there, the driver coming up that is south on Silver has to go over to the left-hand lane. And there's enough shrubbery on both sides of Silver that you can't see around the corner. And cars that are approaching from the east, traveling west, cannot see the car that's in the left-hand lane when they expect it to be in the right-hand lane. There are stop signs before all four corners. But I've had, when I have been traveling east, made a stop on Silver before, on Prospect before going across Silver, I've had a car spin around the corner in their left-hand lane and almost hit me because their left-hand lane ends up being my right-hand lane. I've brought this to the attention of the Chief of Police and also the Town Manager. My concern is that I think an accident is bound to happen there. And whether the solution is to move the sign further north on Silver Street so there isn't any parking that close to the intersection, or whether people need to trim their bushes more, it really is an accident waiting to happen. The people in the house right next to where these cars are parked are fairly elderly. So, I appreciate whoever comes there wants to park close. But during the winter, when there's restrictions on parking overnight, they do manage to park in their driveway, which is just around the corner on Prospect Street. I've taken a picture looking up at the intersection, at the car that's parked there. And I'd like to.
Circulate that.
Get that and answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Stu, you've looked at this. Is there a remedy to this situation?
I don't have an answer yet. Unfortunately, key staff have been out of the office on vacation. I'm looking into whether or not the sign can be pulled back away from the intersection. The unfortunate part is Silver Street is very narrow at that intersection. And so, people who must pull around the parked vehicle will find themselves across the center line. And so, if we can move the sign back or make some other change there, we'll try to do that.
I can tell you from firsthand experience, my parents lived up on Barber Street. They moved there in 1987. And I took care of my parents in the final years of their lives. And I'm very well aware of that problem. Thankfully, to the best of my knowledge, there have been no accidents. Nevertheless, it doesn't mean that it can't happen.
If we could move the sign or that no parking back a couple of spaces, it's going to give a little bit of room to get in rather than be forced to stay out on that.
Yes, then the person, the driver could get around and get back into their lane.
Yeah.
It does look very close. It looks like less than a car length.
Yeah, it is.
Pretty close.
It's actually as it should be according to the standards.
Yeah.
Urban areas. That's the unfortunate part.
But the unfortunate thing is that street basically comes to a bottle.
I'd just like to add, as a pedestrian who walks there quite often, I've almost been hit several times.
Oh, yeah.
As a pedestrian, too. It is really a difficult place to stay safe.
Yeah, thank you.
With respect to, Stu, just with respect to the bushes, and I'm intimately familiar with this, are there any ordinances or requirements that if, you know, the shrubberies?
Those bushes are well trimmed.
They are well trimmed, but I'm telling you.
They're not in the right of way.
Hundreds of times.
They're not in the right of way.
No, they're not.
There are sight distance issues that can be looked at, but I don't think that's the problem. I think the problem really is the narrowness of the street and the location of the no parking here to corner sign.
And the fact that it's a four-way stop is really helpful.
And that always wasn't the case.
I know.
Let's see what we can do.
Thank you, Lorna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda tonight is, that goes down to Stu, the discussion relative to the public ways ordinance. Stu, could you just set it up relative to consideration of potentially removing a portion of that ordinance?
This is in response to the ACLU Vermont letter that went to a number of communities concerned about aggressive panhandling ordinances. And as you folks may remember, back in 2014. Vaguely. Jim, come on. We did adopt some changes to our improper use of public ways and abatement of public nuisances ordinances to include a prohibition against aggressive panhandling. It was brought to our attention or requested by downtown merchants because there were at least one or possibly two individuals downtown who were preying on people who were attempting to use the downtown and shop there. And they were somewhat aggressive. Since that time, the police have developed information cards and things along those lines so that when somebody is panhandling, they can direct them to the social service agencies that can help them. They can, perhaps if they're interfering with traffic, they can move them along, but without issuing any citations. And I don't think there's been any citations issued in quite some time. So, what I've done is highlighted the articles in the ordinance. In 17.3, the definitions relating to aggressive manner, and that's paragraphs F and G. And then, in Article 17.4, the prohibitions relate to paragraphs J through S. All deal with soliciting or panhandling as it is commonly known. And my recommendation to the board would be to repeal those sections and thereby eliminate this as an ordinance in our community.
I sort of take umbrage with that common use panhandling. I think it is requesting soliciting, but the point is well made that this is probably an ordinance that doesn't need our participation. There are other parts of the ordinance which deal with intimidation, public nuisance, and otherwise, without having to go and direct your comments directly at an individual because they're making a request. My feeling is, at this point, I think the police have done a good job of getting to the point of educating. I don't think by not having this, we're going to have a deluge of folks coming in and soliciting on our streets.
No, I don't think so either.
But the essence of it is, I think, this is, whether it's ACLU bringing it to our attention or otherwise, I don't think this particular ordinance has really any particular benefit, at least this section, because this is just a part of the ordinance, the general ordinance, public ways. That's my opinion, board members. Jean?
I agree.
Is there any reason why Rob needs to review this as well?
Rob has reviewed it, so we're good. And he.
That's his recommendation, not Stuart's?
It's came.
Yours or Rob's?
We asked.
If I may, I'm recommending it. But Rob has reviewed the letter from ACLU and the ordinance and believes that there are constitutional issues that are now more well-stated or more clearly stated by recent decisions than they were perhaps four years ago.
Perfect. Jim?
I looked through this, but, Stu, I want to, I remember at the time that this came up, there were rules, and I may have overlooked them, with respect to someone sleeping in their car. Can you point to any of those parts of this that would deny them their right to have a car or a place to sleep?
Yeah.
And would that be included?
No.
In removal?
No.
No, this deals with soliciting only.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, no other questions.
Carson, did you get a chance to ask? Did you have some questions? No, I just, where was the documented? Rob chimed in on this. Was that a separate document?
Yeah, we got it.
It was an email.
It was an email.
It wasn't included in this, though?
No, it came directly.
Okay, that's the part that I was unclear on.
Came directly to us.
I could have attached his email. I didn't.
It's fine. That's where I was when you said he reviewed it. I was kind of curious. I didn't see that part, so it's fine.
Jean? I'm sorry, Tom. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I think the ACLU's letter was a little bit off-putting, but I think that their, I think their intentions are consistent with what you've said, that this is, that things have changed since 2014, and we don't need this at this point. So, I'd be in favor of making the edits that you talked about, Stuart, not getting rid of the whole ordinance, but bringing it up to a little bit more modern perspective.
I'm pleased to see it removed.
Jim?
Yeah, I agree as well.
Audience participation time.
Phone a friend.
Thanks, Bruce.
That's right. My name is Bruce Lee Clark, and I'm a resident of Bennington. And I'm not here representing the ACLU, even if I may be a member of the ACLU. And their letter may be off-putting, but it's in fact constitutionally correct. And I know that this is now sort of fait accompli, and I sort of thought it would be even if I had spoken before. But you need to know that limiting speech really in any way has to have a compelling interest. This statute as drafted, and I don't know who drafted it and I don't care, but the drafting of it gives nobody any compelling interest to limit speech. There isn't any in the statute. There isn't any in any preamble. There wouldn't have been any. There couldn't be any. And yes, the Supreme Court, in a slightly more recent decision, made it perfectly clear that these kinds of statutes are unconstitutional. There can be some regulation of speech, certainly in terms of time, place, and manner. But actually, much of what you're eliminating tonight, if I see the votes correctly, is put the police in a really remarkably difficult position of trying to figure out what constitutes aggressive and also what would constitute shouting in a manner, what's the term? It was an incredibly interesting term.
Reasonably loud under the circumstances.
Yeah. No, where is it? I had it written in my little thing, but I've decided not to talk about that. At any rate, using a voice louder than the circumstances require is something like that. There would be no way for a law enforcement officer to know what that is. So, all I can say is, thank you for eliminating what should never have been passed in the first place. And Jim, I know that you didn't vote for it in the first place anyway. And secondly, it would be my encouragement to, when you get to things like this, and yes, there were complaints from retailers, I know that, because I had long conversations with several of them who are dear friends. But when we get to these kinds of ordinances, can we think twice or three times before we start traipsing over the First Amendment? It would be really helpful for us not to do that. And that would be my encouragement, as well as thanking you for getting rid of what really is an unnecessary statute in the first place.
Being that none of these people who signed this are here, though, I'm sure they took a lot of time and.
Oh, no, Tom was here.
I was here, and the essence of it is.
And Jim was here.
We had dialogue and.
They're not all here, though, and that's one thing.
No.
I want to give them the respect that they probably put a lot of time and effort into this, too, so.
It was a burden to get to this ordinance. And I think we had advice of counsel.
Yes, you did.
In fact, I know we did.
I know you did.
And we were persuaded, as the Select Board sometimes are, by the apparent magnitude of an issue that probably could have been addressed in other ways rather than through ordinance, education and otherwise.
I'd like to just add something.
And Jim did not participate in this.
No, I was the lone voice.
Yeah.
But I want to see.
Just because he was a voice of reason doesn't mean he is tonight.
No, I just want to say to what Carson said, and with respect to the fellow board members who served, I honestly, and I honestly believe that all of them who voted for it thought that they were doing what they thought was best for the people of Bennington. And, you know, that's one of the risks that all of us endure with respect to anything that we vote on. I've got to believe, and I want to believe, and I will believe, that each and every one of us who sits on this board honestly has the best interests of the town of Bennington and the people of Bennington.
That's why I bring them to bear when I say that.
But they were.
Not in this room, all of them.
Yeah, exactly. And when I see the colleagues that were on the board, I have every faith that, notwithstanding Jacobs's signature, that the others have given it a lot of thought.
They did.
And I did not mean that they did not take.
I didn't take it that way.
No, 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 no.
I didn't take it that way, Bruce. I just want to make mention that.
Oh, okay.
There's names on this list here that.
Sure.
Have given far more to this town than I have even dreamt of giving.
All of us.
So, I just want to give them the respect they deserve.
I'm just asking that we be really careful when we get to things like speech. And if you look at what counts as solicitation, there's nothing in that paragraph that doesn't count as speech. And even when speech annoys us, and yes, it can, it still, the government may not limit it without compelling reasons. Compelling reasons. That's my point. And I hope we take it hard. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bruce. Could I have a motion relative to this ordinance, relative to the recommendation from our manager and the discussion?
I would recommend, I would make a motion that we accept the manager's recommendation to adjust the ordinance as suggested.
Second. And that's referring to deletion of particular paragraphs in Article 17.3F through G-inclusive and Article 17.4, paragraphs J through S-inclusive. I would do it, I expect. I have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
When will that happen? Is it immediate?
Actually, the law provides that there is a 60-day appeal period essentially where someone could appeal your decision via petition. It must be posted within 14 days in a paper of general circulation. And within 60 days, it becomes effective.
Okay.
But have in mind that it's not going to be enforced within that period of time.
It hasn't been enforced in quite a while.
Yeah, thanks, Stu.
Yeah, that's a good reminder before everyone comes out for the next meeting.
But just, you know, it's almost like using this as an educational tool, this experience, this board and other boards that come after us, that we have to deal with the issues of the moment. And Constitution's been around a long time. And at this particular point in time, I think it's appropriate for us to vote all in favor of the excision, exceeding.
Exclusion.
Excision, thank you very much, of those particular article sections. Say aye?
Aye. Aye.
That's seven in favor and no opposition. So, the decision relative to those articles is accepted. Good. Stu?
Yes, errors and omissions. For those of you who are not aware of this particular process, because we don't do it every year, generally, the grand list is set on or about. do it every year, uh, generally, the grand list is set on or about April one of a given year. If, in fact, during that year, prior to December thirty-first, uh, the listers discover an error, they have the authority under statute to recommend a change in the grand list that has been filed, and this board has the authority to approve that change, thereby amending the twenty eighteen grand list. And you have before you a parcel, uh, that, uh, the owners indicated no portion of the property was used for non-homestead purposes. It, it had to do with, uh, correcting the homestead value, a minor adjustment in the tax bill of a hundred and thirty-five dollars. The listers recommend your acceptance.
Is there a motion? Accept that.
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
Any further question here? Go ahead.
I was just already ready for the vote.
Okay. I was going to, but I--
Put your hand up.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
So accept it. Thanks. Managers report.
Yes, I have one action item tonight. Uh, the Bennington Fire Department has requested a waiver on the alcohol prohibition on town properties so that it may conduct its annual clam bake out here in the fenced-in area adjacent to the building. Uh, we have done this before, um, and you have their request from the current chief, I think it's Jeff Bickers, uh, making that formal request. And it's for Sunday, September sixteenth, from ten AM until five PM.
Is this a standard?
Yes. It, we've done it before.
Yeah. Okay, is there-- Do we even need a motion on that, Stu?
We do, we do need a motion, uh, to waive the prohibition, yes.
Motion to waive the provision.
Second? Second? Got a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? If no discussion?
Aye.
Good, good.
Clam bake.
Yep.
Select board members.
Clam bake.
Pre-admission, select board members.
Yeah, we go.
I think it's called like-- Forward with pre-admission.
I do have one other brief thing that I want to bring to your attention. You will recall when we were, uh, talking about the potential impact of the wastewater treatment facility upgrade bond, uh, while we were coming very close to receiving the last of the approvals from the bond bank for six million dollars, the remaining six million, uh, of that, uh, particular bond of nine point eight-five million. And I think back, when we were talking about this, uh, our, uh, finance director was suggesting that the impact could be anywhere from, I think, uh, nine to eleven or twelve percent change in the rates for sewer, municipal sewer. We will be, at some point, we've done some projections, we have two options. Uh, one is a, uh, an increase of, uh, twelve percent in the rates over a three-year period or, uh, a declining percent increase, starting at, um, ten and dropping to seven point five over a four-year period. The impact on the rates is, is the same. It's just a matter of whether you want to shorten the timeframe in which we get the rates changed, uh, and/or lengthen it out, which brings, brings those rate increases up, uh, slightly slower by one year.
When will this take place, starting--
This, we would be talking about this next, uh, our next budget session, which would be probably next April, when we present the new wastewater treatment, uh, wastewater budget to you. Uh, it, but the bond bank was, was, um, somewhat insistent that we, they wanted us to bring to your attention, so you were fully aware. We did tell them that we talked about this when the bond issue was being considered that would have a substantial impact on our rates. They just wanted to be sure that we laid this out. We laid this out for them, using current, uh, flows and, and those kinds of things. But they did want me to mention it to you folks, so that you were not taken by surprise when we come back to you with a budget that increases. And we can determine in April and May whether we do it over four years or three years, but those are the two options that Melissa's been working with today.
And there's no possible way to create a budget where we can pass those increases out a longer period of time?
Uh, the, I would say you might be able to do that. We haven't, we haven't looked at that. Uh, the, the bond bank is, is, um, very concerned that, that this seems like a very, very steep increase for the community. Uh, and they understand that the public supported the bond, and, and obviously, this has to come, as it is. So at the time, Carson, I think we can take a look at extending that, but, uh, know that the first rate increases will probably hit in, uh, twenty twenty, FY twenty twenty. The major, the secondary increases, we may be able to push out to twenty twenty-one.
This is not a surprise to us, because we are engaged in the process, but--
Right.
Most people are only as engaged as when they get their bill in front of them.
Well, yes, that's true, but we'll have--
I know, I'm just saying. So we need to kind of be their voice of reason, because we are that--
It's a good question.
Process.
Could we, you know, the bond is what period, over what term?
Well, it, we're looking, the bond is a twenty-year bond.
Yep, amortized.
And, and because we, we're running two, two projects, essentially, uh, one will be finished in twenty eighteen, December twenty eighteen, a year from now, then we have to start dealing with the impact of that particular borrowing. Uh, we are asking the bond bank to give us some additional consideration, uh, and, uh, they are talking with Department of Environmental Conservation, which is where we're getting the monies, uh, about that. We might be able to push it out two years, because that's what it used to be.
That's right.
EPA now, and having these monies over to states is now saying, we want that, that delay shortened to a year.
Because I know we sold it to ourselves, anyway, that it was not going to impact till the project--
Yeah, we did not, we didn't anticipate the shortened timeframe.
Yeah.
Um, but we will have to raise sufficient monies, uh, to begin paying this bond in FY twenty. It may be, it may be in interest only, it may be that we'll be able to push it back a year, but we will be talking about this come budget.
Anything, even before that, we should probably have another update in this--
We'll, we'll let you know what-- We are in, in, somewhat in negotiations with the bond bank and DEC about what, what additional help they can provide for us, because we did assume, and we were, at the time, it was a two-year delay before payment started, and that's been shortened just this year.
And that should help percentage-wise, if we're able to push that out and increase the rate a little bit the first year, even though we're not paying for it, it should help.
Plus, we can have a few dollars reserved that we've been--
Well, as you know, we're, we're budgeting, uh, approximately six hundred thousand dollars in depreciation--
Yeah.
Which is essentially establishing a reserve--
Right.
Uh, and, and providing us with money, even though it's not a dedicated reserve, per se.
Yeah. Thanks for the update.
I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Nope, you did. Thanks. Thanks.
Good news comes in bunches, doesn't it?
You got it.
I, I just have a couple of questions first, Stu. Um, the PFOA topic, um, I know there was a community meeting possibly being scheduled.
It looks like it will be, uh, and thank you for bringing that up, because I had conversations with the state, uh, individuals last week, the end of last week. It looks like it will now be in the first part of October.
Okay. And on the water treatment project, how are things going with Kingsbury so far?
Kingsbury so far is, is really just in their, they're in their, um, startup, uh, they're bringing in equipment, they're, they're staking out the areas that they're going to be working. Uh, not a lot is occurring yet, but we expect by the end of September, work will begin in earnest.
So, so far, so good with that?
So far, so good.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Stu?
Pardon me?
Anything else for Stu? Um, yeah, Stu, and the, uh, idea of agenda planning, Bill Colvin is planning on coming the next meeting?
I, yes, he'll be here, the late September meeting, yes.
And he's going to be reporting on the contract that we have with the--
He'll be, he'll be reporting on, on his contract with the PCIC. He may also be, uh, bringing some additional information on the Putnam block.
Right, yeah. That would be, that would be a hope. Um, so that, if that's all for Stu, I think it's time for other business. Um, Gene?
I can't think of anything right now, but I might--
Okay, we'll come back to you. Keep, reserve your time, right? Carson?
We haven't had a meeting since the successful, um, garlic festival.
Yes.
Which last meeting I tried to report on, but I was thrown off by you.
Did you go to the right date?
I did go to the garlic festival.
Isn't it this weekend?
Exactly. Um, Bennington Chamber with a, a tremendous amount of volunteers from our community. A special thanks goes to Lindy Lynch, who successfully put together another wonderful garlic fest. Um, she's an incredible asset to this community--
Yes.
For those that don't know her. Um, but I, I'm not taking any credit, because I didn't do anything for it, but--
Yeah, I saw you out there.
It was a great, I mean, showing, it, it was, it was wonderful, so congratulations to everyone involved in that.
What he said.
You said?
I said, what he said.
Okay.
It's Stewart, I know you don't always read all the things that you put on, on our informational sheet here, but it is worth just letting everybody else know that the citizen survey is coming along and that we'll be getting to that soon, so, um, that's, that's in the works. And, of course, uh, the paving stuff is, you're getting there. It's looking good.
Uh, yes, we are. It's, it's actually moving along fairly quickly. I think that they're contemplating, uh, beginning the final pavement, uh, something like within two weeks.
Yeah.
Uh, but they've still got a lot of work to do on the sidewalks, on signage, parking spaces, all of those things to finish up the project.
Yeah.
And the Second Congregational Church did a nice job with their energy fair that was a lot, lot going on, but, uh, garlic fest was, was amazing. But the energy fair was, was really great, too, and they had a lot of good educational things there, so I hope they keep doing it.
I've found this community, especially during the busy summer months, every weekend is full of--
That's right.
--volunteerism activities that really make it pretty special. You almost wish the summer season would get expanded a little bit, so we wouldn't have to try, make so many choices every weekend.
Most promoters I know take summer at a dead run.
Yeah, it seems like it doesn't. Gene?
No, nothing.
Uh, speaking of every weekend having something, we have the food truck festival this Saturday.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
There you go.
That's downtown, right?
Yeah.
School Street that we closed?
School Street's all day, right?
Yeah.
Nine o'clock, ten o'clock.
Is it relegated just to school street?
No, I think it's in the Hart lot.
Yeah, there are trucks in, in the former Hart Theater lot, and then there will be trucks, School Street will be closed. And we're working right now with the, the folks who are organizing the event to provide signage and things like that.
Just the upper section of School Street, correct?
It's remain to the--
South, south section.
Yeah, so you hear this closing of School Street.
Not the entire--
One block.
Only one block of School Street.
One block, yep.
The--
Lives on that block anyway.
Nobody.
No, we don't. Um, I'd like to see, if possible, in early October, if we could get the police chief to come in and maybe give us an update on the opioid crisis, how the department's dealing with the issue, sort of, you know, what's happening now, uh, because this is not something that's going away. We just don't always like to talk about it or hear about it all the time, but I think it's important for our community to recognize that this is a serious and ongoing epidemic and what our community, uh, is doing. And I don't expect the police department is going to be the sole source of our relief, but I think the chief can give us sort of a, uh, an overview of what's happening and what he's seeing, or what his department is seeing. And if the, uh, emergency response folks want to come to hospital and/or the rescue squad--
Okay.
It would be really good to hear. I think we could be really informed and educated.
Forest here, as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we include, um, is it Gracie and her handler in that?
Yeah.
The, the drug dog and her handler as well? I just, I think, I don't think the public sees what's going on, and I think it would, the demonstration, I know there was a huge drug bust that made some national attention that she was attributed to. I just think it would be good to add to that.
See what you can do. And last, but potentially of some significant interest, at least, and I've heard other folks talk about it, single-use plastic shopping bags. The life expectancy of these bags is about twenty minutes. I know for a fact, because I have collected them over the years, they still sit in my hallway without a home.
But a lifetime in--
Yeah, but they, they land in a landfill, it's a thousand or whatever number of years. Other communities have tackled this. I think it's time for Bennington to step up--
Agreed.
At least to examine the, the issue. I want the viewing public to know that we're not moving on it tonight.